Here.
Powell?
Here.
Stefan?
Here.
Thor?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of May 14th.
Move for approval?
Second.
Move to second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Court please call a roll.
Councilmember Zell Faro?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved. Eight zero. We have no public comment this evening. Items on the agenda, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, item As on both agendas. This is the agreement with Duff Entertainment, Inc. for the Nightmare on Chicago Street Operational Services. Nightmare on Chicago Street takes place in downtown Elgin each October. This year's event is scheduled to take place on October 25th. Planning is already well underway. A portion of that planning includes securing a vendor to facilitate the gate, ticketing, and security operations. Request for proposals to provide these services was published, and Duff Entertainment, Inc. was the sole respondent. This proposal provides all necessary ticketing, gate management, and security for the event. It's on both agendas because ticket sales will begin on Friday, June 13th.
No motions necessary. Any questions for Manager before we start? Ms. Zell Faro?
But number, item number 10, it states the amount that they're seeking is $69,958.68, but they're requesting $74,266. Just questioning the discrepancy there with the $4,307.32.
That appears to be a Scrivener's error, Councilmember, probably an artifact from the previous agreement. Apologize and thank you for making that correction. As you can see from the attachments and indeed the recommended amount not to exceed $74,266 is what we're asking the council to approve. That contract will be amended before it's finally signed.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And then I had a question. How long was RFP open for? And I'm just curious, because I know we only got one applicant. This applicant makes total sense. They've done it before. They've proven they've had success. But I'm just curious, and how long was the RFP open for, to see what we can do to help encourage others to have a bigger pool?
Let's see. So it looks like based on the legal impact, it says that the request for proposals was published in the Daily Herald on April 3rd and opened on April 15th. So it's looking at a little bit more than two weeks.
Okay.
I know that 69 vendors were all separately sent an RFP for ticketing and gate services.
Thank you.
Okay, so on both agendas, we'll get another chance to take a look at it at the regular meeting. Mr. Manager, item B.
Item B is the Hill BMX Track, Designated Open Track Riding Hours for the Public. The city staff, in response to community inquiries about making the hill available for recreational use, worked with the Elgin BMX Riders Association to develop programming for public access to the track during designated hours. Staff are recommending hours of operation for public open track use at the Hill BMX Track on Thursday nights from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. and on Sundays from 12:00 to 6:00. A daily admission fee of $5 or the purchasing of an open track hours, excuse me, open track riding hour season pass for $100 is being recommended. This evening, we have Parks and Recreation Director Jen Hermanson to provide some background on the BMX, on the Hill BMX Track, and also the discussions that she's had with the Elgin BMX Riders Association to come with this proposed agreement. So with your pleasure, Mayor, Ms. Hermanson can come and address the council.
Ms. Hermanson, please come up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, and staff. Thank you so much for having me. Today, we're going to go over the hill, also known as the BMX Track. We're going to highlight the history programming, high-level financials, the affiliate grant programming, and staff's recommendations for public open hours. The Elgin BMX Association is now called the Elgin BMX Riders Association. The track officially opened on June 3rd, 1990. The hill is located at the Elgin Sports Complex, and the Elgin BMX Association funded over 97% of the original construction cost. The track is sanctioned by USA BMX Association. The hill is currently managed by the Elgin BMX Riders Association, an all-volunteer nonprofit organization and a current city affiliate. It currently hosts events for everyone, including beginner, novice, immediate, and expert riders. As stated, the Elgin BMX Riders Association is an all non-volunteer organization who currently oversees all track operations and maintenance of the track. Those are approximately the numbers that you see, volunteer hours that they put in each year since 2015. The volunteers currently oversee a number of activities such as practices, leagues, clinics, racing events, special events, and all maintenance activities throughout the season. The hours vary depending on the project's events and maintenance planned for the year. The Elgin BMX Riders Association currently serves the Elgin community and kids and family of Northern Illinois. They currently have riders between the ages of 3 and 83. The BMX Riders Association has a board also, and volunteers that have specialized roles such as track operator, track maintenance manager, registration manager, race balancing, and finance manager. The pictures on these slides are just some of the current volunteers. I'm sure I missed a few, but there are a lot. So one of the, and I apologize. So a key part of Elgin BMX Riders Association is to keep kids interested and engaged in BMX racing on and off the track and giving back to the community. One way they do it is with special events throughout the season. Many of their events benefit other nonprofits, families in need, whether it's financial illness, raising money for cancer, and other special events. And all of their special events are open to the public. You do not need to be a part of their membership to enjoy these community events. The Elgin BMX Riders Association also donates $2,500 a year towards the youth scholarship fund through our foundation. As I mentioned, they really give back to the community, and one of the things that they created in 2023 is formally creating the Elgin BMX Assistant Program that helps families in need that cannot afford BMX riding. They have provided scholarships throughout the years for this, but then they formally created the program in 2023. As you can see, just over the year, how much it has increased. And many of their events, as I mentioned before, benefit families in need and other nonprofits, which they have since 2015 donated over $16,000 to families in need for different types of illnesses, scholarships, or other things of need. So what sets the hill apart? It is the number-one track in Illinois, the number-four track in the central region, the number-nine track in USA in Canada, and in 2025, it is going to host its first Illinois State Final Race. To maintain a USA BMX sanctioned track, which the hill is, the track must comply with US BMX rules, regulations, ensuring safety and fair competition. It includes requiring all riders to have a current BMX membership that participate in the USA BMX sanctioned events and to adhere to equipment regulations and following track safety guidelines. The track needs to ensure that all equipment and riders meet the USA BMX regulations. So why is it an exceptional track? The Elgin BMX Writers Association has done significant upgrades to the track. They use high-speed cameras to allow for more accurate finishing results, a three-loop timing system that uses detection points around the track to accurately record rider start or finish times. They have transponders that attach the riders' bikes detected by the loops, providing precise timing for each rider. They've installed a safe barrel gate for BMX riders racing to design minimum risk of injury to riders during the start of the race. There's features like barrel-like cover on the back, electronic interlock safety checks during the operation, and the ability to adjust for different gate speeds and timing. They've also improved the track's surface, and we'll see that in the next few slides. And the goal of the surface is to provide good grip that can withstand the impacts of repeated use and varying weather conditions. As I mentioned, you can see kind of in the middle-left of the slide, that was one of the original, how the track looked before they've done upgrades and numerous years of improvements so that they could get to that number-one status in Illinois. We'll address the why is the fence up? Unfortunately, the fence was installed in 2023 for unintentional and intentional vandalism. Some of the unintentional vandalism, I don't think people realize when they go out there with dirt bikes, four-wheelers, race cars, motorized scooters, skateboards, that it damages the track. They're not going out there to hurt the track at all or anything like that. However, having those motorized vehicles, even the Strider bikes, does damage the track. And then there are intentional vandalism, which you can see, people were stomping on the track, trying to rip it apart, starting fires, and tearing boards apart and all of that. So the fence went up to help protect the great asset of what the track provides for the community. So track happenings. So here are all the happenings that go on at the track, and the BMX Riders Association does put on a Park District Beginner League program, and that is the feeder team for the BMX family racing team. The neat thing is, is currently all the instructors that are overseeing this Beginner League have actually gone through the program. Here's a typical week at the hill. Mondays are practices and private rentals. Tuesdays are races. Wednesdays are clinics and programs and leagues. Thursdays are practices and the proposed public open track hours. Monday is maintenance and race prep day. Saturday is race day. Sunday is proposed open track hours and maintenance as needed. So where do people travel from? Currently, there are over, people travel from over 146 different cities, 24 states, and multiple countries. We had international visitors from Colombia, Canada, Argentina, Aruba, and Mexico in 2024. Shifting gears a little bit, I mentioned that the Elgin BMX Riders Association is a current affiliate. Here are our current affiliates that we have, and part of being an affiliate means that you can apply for an affiliate grant. Here is the total current affiliate grant funding awarded from 2000 to 2024. And these are just for, as I mentioned in the previous slide, the current affiliates. This is how much they have received. We have had affiliates that are no longer affiliates, and this is how much they have received between 2000 and 2024. And so I combine those two. Here is the total affiliate grant funding awarded between 2000 and 2024 for all of those affiliates, whether they are current or not. And then breaking it down to just the Elgin BMX Riders Association grant funding awarded between 1991 and 2024. I did not put 1990 on there for when the track first opened. However, this is the total funding that they have received from 1991 forward. What I could find, I just could not find the exact amount that was awarded to BMX in 1990, but what I could find was the project cost was a little over $51,000 and almost $52,000, and the Park and Reclamation Task Force had given them $1,520 as of June 3rd, 1990, when they first opened. So. Here is just a quick snapshot of the Elgin BMX Riders Association annual revenue. And then we switch to the annual expenses, just an overview so that you have a high level of their finances, and then just a breakdown. As with any nonprofit organization, as stated above, the Elgin BMX Riders operates for the kids and the family. They focus on a place where individuals of various ages can participate in the BMX riding with the emphasis of family involvement and fostering a positive atmosphere. Some, their mission is to focus on community, and then anything net profit that the Elgin BMX Riders Association earns goes directly back into the maintenance of the track and capital improvements. As stated before, the Elgin BMX Riders Association currently pays for all the maintenance of the track and the day-to-day operations. Some of the examples of projects that they have completed over the years without the grant funding is we have the concession stand, retaining walls, jersey barriers, asphalt interns, starting hill canopies, finish line trellises, track technologies, computers, storage shed, queue systems, replaced windows, four-wheelers, coolers, and more. And I can go on and on and on. Some of the things that they're planning for the future is irrigation, more shade structure, improved and updated LED lights, improvement to the track's audio system, scoring building, and they would like to refresh and resurface the limestone track. So that brings us to today of what our proposal is. Our proposal is, we wanted to offer a weekday and a weekend option riding for the public so we can accommodate different schedules. Some people might be available during the week. Some might be available during the weekend. And since this is our first new program with, of official open hours, we would treat this as any new program, and we're going to continuously monitor and evaluate. At the end of the season, we'll complete a survey and see how the program went for the public, including the dedicated days and times. Things to just note is, we still need maintenance days, and the reason why we propose these days is the Elgin BMX Rider Association, they submit their schedule for the upcoming year by the November of the previous year. So the schedule that they submitted for 2025 was submitted to the USA BMX Association November of 2024. Options. So fee options, as staff recommends, we recommend charging a $5 daily fee, but then also offering a very discounted season pass option. The season pass option would be a great way for, if people cannot afford to pay the daily fee, they can apply for the youth scholarship fund, which would more than cover this fee for them to participate. With staff recommending charging a daily fee, it is not to make money. It is just to help subsidize the cost, which we'll see in the next few slides, of running the program. With our estimates of just charging a $5 daily fee, the city would still be subsidizing over $2,000 to run the program. So do we charge for other open gyms plays? Yes. Here is a sheet just to give you a snapshot of some of the other programs that we do charge a fee to help subsidize the costs of the program. As I mentioned before, if we charge a drop-in fee, we are looking to subsidize about $2,258 without maintenance costs, and then approximately $7,758 with maintenance costs. If we go with the option of not charging a fee, we would look at subsidizing approximately $5,058, and then with maintenance, $10,558. So where are these costs going? The cost is for staffing, the open, having an activity supervisor out there. We do have a little bit of training expenses to train the staff, and then general maintenance and replacing any broken items or things that might happen during the public open hours. And a more detailed, in-your-packet attachments, A, B, and C show you a little bit more detail of where these graphs came from. Alternatives to what I presented, we can keep everything as is. We could look into other dates and times. There's a little bit of issue with that for this season, and that's why we recommend the hours that we did. However, evaluating that at the end of the season, how did it go? Are those the right hours and days? Next steps, if council members would like to go with everything that is presented, then we would go, we would look to hiring an activity supervisor to oversee the operations at the designated track hours. We would amend the city's existing land use agreement with Elgin BMX, reflecting the new track hours and the maintenance assistance. We would coordinate with the city's risk management department to develop and update a waiver for participants and for the dedicated track hours, and establish operational and safety protocols for the riders' use during designated open track hours. We'd also work with the Elgin BMX Riders Association to arrange staff training on sessions on how to properly use the track, what types of bikes can go on the track, and protocols, and then develop and distribute marketing materials to promote the awareness and participation during the track hours. With all of that, if anyone has any questions, now is the time.
Any questions for Ms. Hermanson at this time? Mr. Dixon?
Thank you for your presentation. Happy to hear that this is finally going to be getting opened up to the public. I know you just got here, but I'm assuming that you know a little bit of the history with this track. So can you tell me, tell us the last time when it was open to the public?
That would be in, well, prior to 2023 when the fence went up, but there wasn't any regulated hours or designated hours or an activity supervisor on site. So it was just no fence, anyone came and went.
At any time and all that, right? And so the fences were put up to safeguard the track?
Correct.
The investment that has gone into it, right?
Exactly.
With the two days and limited hours that is going to be open on those days, is there any possibility of it being able to be used for public events? Say, someone wants to do a racing competition of any sorts? Or is it just for, you know, come during that time, have fun, but no like sanctioned events, I guess?
The current times that we propose is just open hours, anyone comes. We are not proposing that we would utilize those hours for any private rentals or sanctioned events at this time.
Okay. And the, you had to mention the scholarship that would be available for those who can't afford the full value, which was 200 something dollars, right? It would be down, it would be lower to $100 after the scholarship? That's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah. No, sorry for the confusion. What we would do is we'd offer, like, if someone just wanted to come and go, they'd just have a $5 daily fee. However, with a lot of our programs and open gyms, we offer like a punch pass or a membership, just to give a reduced rate. So we would offer a season pass to anyone that would want to buy it for $100. The value of that would just be 280, just so that they know that they're getting a good deal. So anyone could buy the season pass for $100, and then they don't have to pay that $5 every time. And then families that could not afford that $100 could apply for a youth scholarship fund, and the youth scholarship fund would more than cover that $100 for them to participate.
Gotcha. So it was a $280 value, but only $100 for the fee. Gotcha. Thank you. Okay. All right. Well, I'm happy to see that this is, that some changes are being made, and it is going to be open to the public. There are a lot of people who, you know, ride bikes in this community and even BMX bikes. So I think it's a great thing. So thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stefan, did you ever hand it?
Hi, dude. Yeah. Jen, thank you very much for this. If nothing else, it reminded me that this opened in 1990, which I had forgotten, which is kind of amazing in itself. And, you know, just getting a quick review of the number of hours that people have volunteered here and the other events that they do. I remember, I guess I'm going to date myself, when the fireworks were out at the sports complex, the 4th of July. Instead of trying to beat the traffic to get out of there, because that's one reason we left, it was one way in and out, we would go walk the track when there wasn't a fence and just kind of check it out. And the pictures show how much improved it's become over that time, and it reflects, it's reflected in the rankings that they get. I'm supportive of this. I, as has been said, I think it's a great way to try to address two conflicting things. We're trying to protect the asset. It's very specialized, but also have it open for people with a fee that I think is reasonable based on, again, if nothing else, you've shown us how we charge for other types of activities that we have, like climbing wall and swimming and other things that cost, and we have to try to capture, recapture some of those expenses. I, just, just a question I had that came up when I saw this presentation come up in our feed earlier today. And it's off-topic of what we're doing today, which I support all of this, and I'm anxious to see how it gets received, how people show up on the Thursdays and the Sundays, and willing to look at it if we need to, to adjust, we'll find out. But back to the affiliates. Again, completely off your presentation, but I know why some of these affiliates, the previous affiliates that have gone away, the two little leagues merged with others. But in the American Legion, I guess the Teenage League ball is gone. I think that's what that was. But any idea why, or can I ask why the Kickers and the Heat no longer participate? Is there anything that we could have done on our end to avoid that?
I think most of them, but I don't, I have not researched it.
You were not here.
Yeah, exactly. I think most of them have dissolved or merged with other associations.
Got it. So nothing that we did that chased them away. It's just evolution?
Yes.
Got it. Thanks. That's all I had.
Zell Faro?
Thank you for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. In the diagram that, or the chart that you shared, there is a difference between resident and non-resident for the majority of them. There's a few that are actually the same price. So wanted to rationale of why we're charging the same thing for residents and non-residents on this one.
We were just trying to keep it simple with the opening, how is our POS system going to work out there, and more logistics, and just, it's a new program, let's test it out. How much traffic are we going to get? And then just see how the pilot program worked, and then we can always reassess in the future. So we're trying to keep it simple.
And then, in looking at it, is there, could we do possibly, and what are your thoughts on doing a one free day for those that can't afford the daily fee but want to try it out but never been onto the track? I think we should try to implement something where those that can't afford it can. And I think as a council, we need to decide, like, for those that are confronting homelessness in a shelter, we were requiring them to show an ID to be in there, right? And if we're at the most vulnerable level, if they're showing their ID to show they're a resident, to get a resident resource, why are we charging the same thing for residents and non-residents on a luxury right here?
And actually, BMX does offer, if you've never been to the track, on Thursdays, they already offer, just come. It's free, and you can try it. You just have to sign their waiver, but they do offer a free day to come and try it.
So it's on the same day that we'll be having our open hours, where we'll be charging a $5 fee?
Yep. Yep. So they just have the, if you've never been there, you can try it, and anyone. So even the people, like the residents, they can go right now. They don't have to do the $5 for that one time. They can try it for free, and anyone can do it. But they just get one free one.
Well, and so that's, so if it's on Thursday and we're on Thursday, like, is that Thursday earlier hours then?
Nope. It's at the same time because it's already an open, anyone can go on Thursdays right now. But how it's marketed, people seem to think that it's just BMX riders, and it's not. So we are just making sure that it is clear that it's open, anyone can go, and making sure that we market it a little bit different.
So wait, I think I'm losing you a little bit. So if BMX has it free on a Thursday, and we're charging on a Thursday at the exact same hours, why would anyone pay the $5 fee and just go through the other one?
Because they can only get it one time.
It's a one-time thing.
So it's, yeah. So they have a promo code, kind of like if you wanted to try something new or a seven-day trial, they have a promo code that they put your information in, and then you get it free for one time. And then after that, you have to have a BMX membership.
I would like to see how we could figure out to give residents, given that this is, track is the number-one in Illinois and it's here in Elgin, that we should give residents a perk, and if we're going to be charging, to charge them less than non-residents. perk in if we're going to be charging to charge them less than non-residents.
We definitely can look into that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Ortiz and then Mr. Good.
Thank you, Ms. Hermanson, for the work on this and the presentation. I have quite a few questions, actually. When this agenda went public, a bunch of the, I'm assuming their parents that have their kids in the program, and you answered one of the questions already about they already have the open hours there and then you mentioned it was free, but then you said it was only a one time free because the parents are saying that they do charge $5 already to get in. So you already answered that one. The other one was for Sunday open hours, they had mentioned that though that day, all the riders are in Rockford racing or competing in whatever races are in Rockford. So if all the riders that would probably use this track the most are in Rockford, is that the day that the association gave up because they know nobody will be here?
No, just looking at their schedule, they usually only schedule races on Saturday. You know, unfortunately, I didn't look into like Rockford's schedule or any other schedules, but the Elgin BMX Association, their dedicated race days are Saturdays. So it was just a really nice open day that we could utilize for open hours without changing any of the Elgin BMX race days schedule that's already implemented.
Okay, that makes sense. And then for your pay schedule, you have all, everything for the rec center that gets paid and then the BMX track, but under membership you have zero. So somebody has a current membership to the rec center, they can go use a track under that current membership?
And I apologize, the BMX track open.
So it'd be slide 20, you have a Bates dam 25 in the bottom corner of the agenda packet? No, in your present, in your presentation. So it'll be slide 25 in your presentation. The first thing, BMX track, and you have a location in sports complex, member zero, but you look all the way down, everything zero except for water aerobics. So does that mean if they have a rec center membership, they can go ride already under that, under the current membership?
No, because that is just BMX. We just, I just put on the chart what BMX charges currently and what their membership is. So that is a great point, is that the BMX track open ride, that is not associated with the Park District or the Parks Department, Recreation Department. That is just BMX Riders Association. So great point.
Okay. And then seemingly you got a lot of input from the association themselves and assuming their board members, did you get any input from the families or the kids that actually ride these bikes to see what they thought about this?
No, so I was just looking at it from a logistics standpoint of, you know, we had 60 days to complete this project. So I took the approach of let's look at this logistically, how can we make this happen? You guys have your schedule, let's get this done and went from there.
Okay. And then the last one is you mentioned that they have events, so the association, I keep saying they, but the association keeps have, has public events. I've never seen them, also I'm not a rider, so I probably not privy to them. Do you know where they advertise and promote these so the residents of Elgin know they can go there and do whatever event they're doing for that holiday?
I have seen some of them on Facebook. And I've seen them through their Facebook feed, but I would absolutely encourage any Elgin Red student to reach out to them and ask them, but I have seen some, just because I've seen it looking for information, but that is where I assume that they would post it. I have seen some information on their website, too.
Okay. And then you said there's going to be educational piece if this does pass and the council says it's cool. In this new partnership, I guess, that we're doing, having these open days, those events that they already currently have, would we be able to help them promote those and let everybody else know that those are open for the public and not just for the members of the association?
It's definitely something that we can investigate. I just want to also make sure that we're compliant with our agreements and our land use agreements and make sure everything's in there. And that's one of the next steps is just relooking at that land use agreement and that is definitely something we can consider.
Okay. And then the last thing is I like to keep using the word pilot. And I like that because one thing I don't like about this is that it's only, what is it, eight hours a day, six hours on Sunday and then eight, two hours on Thursday? I'd like to see it open more, but as you said, we could reevaluate it at the end of their BMX season and see if we could squeeze it another day or a few more hours somewhere else.
Yep. And the biggest logistical hurdle that we have to look at is the maintenance. A lot of times before you open it for practices or races or anything like that, you want to drag and make sure that the track is ready for whatever event is, you know, the practice is happening and they currently do all of that. So looking, like you said, that's why it's a pilot program, let's figure out how this is going to work. Are there additional hours? We can open it up. And then what is the maintenance associated with that? So absolutely.
All right. And then you already answered the other one, never mind. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Shout out to the association for prying the state finals away from Rockford. That's pretty exciting, especially on their 35th anniversary. So as I was going through when this originally came up with the land use agreements, it looked to me as though, say it's a baseball field and I wanted to organize a, kind of like a full charity event, I would have to get a permit to use that field for an organized event. I have to imagine during these discussions Monday, was that also discussed as a possible day to add in to addition to Thursday and Sunday? Because it's kind of just like a practice day, but I see they also do private rentals. So I guess two parter, is the private rental, a rental through the association to use the track or is it somebody coming to us to get a permit to use that facility?
It's actually the BMX Hill Racing Team. They put it as a private rental. They use it as a dual day. So they're, the BMX Racing Team, because they volunteer for all the other days, the beginner league, the Thursday practices, the races, that's the day that they can actually race, or I mean, practice, but then they also do maintenance and fix things and everything like that. So they block out that time. I am the type of person that says we can look into anything and really can. And so I think that we would just need to evaluate how much maintenance are they doing that day and practicing and see if we could get something to work.
I would be curious to see, A, how many private events are they doing a season? And if Monday would be in play for a potential expansion?
Yeah, because as of right now, when they say private rental, it's really for them to practice. So, yep, they're not like renting it out. It's the people that consider the hill their home.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I appreciate all the work that's done to find a way to make some of this happen, but I think I agree with some of the comments that have been made where I would like to see it expanded a little bit more than just the eight hours per week, but I understand more costs come with that. So do you know off the top of your head a ballpark number, say Monday was mixed in, the additional cost that would be associated? Is it as easy as just plugging in like the Thursday costs or is it a unique variable?
I actually, by the end of the committee, the whole meeting, I could give you an answer for that. Because it's all in a spreadsheet and I just click a number and all the numbers change.
Okay. But yeah, I like everything you've presented so far. I do think, yeah, we have to get the word out because from what I could gather, it seemed like, you know, fence went up and then there was kind of a change in how people were viewing that track. So yeah, I'm just happy to see we've made some progress and we can get the word out that, you know, the public can come back to this. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Ms. Paul?
For the presentation, a lot of the observations or questions I have have already been addressed, but I just wanted to emphasize a couple of things. I, I do appreciate the fact that it's a pilot. I would like to see it expanded. It's also important when we're doing these pilots and doing things like this, that we get perspective from both sides, but it sounds like that's going to happen after the pilot program is over, that we make sure that we get feedback from the users that are not the regular BMX riding club. Because I think that's really the feedback we need and probably even needed to formulate this in a way that we're making sure, I mean, because we did this specifically for them and the fact that we really didn't include them and get their feedback in putting this together is, you know, a little disappointing, but I'm hoping we can, you know, correct that for, you know, after the, after the pilot is over. And then just an overall statement, just looking at the fee structure, I completely agree with one of our other council members that mentioned this. In terms of the fee structure, member rates, resident versus non-resident, I'm big on making sure that there is a distinct difference between what our residents are paying and non-residents are paying. When you look at the, this, this chart, there's not that big of a difference in the non-resident rates, but I would definitely, you know, even before we launch this pilot, I would like to see us have a non-resident rate as part of the pilot program. I think that only makes sense. And then just overall for future thought, I really want us to, you know, as we go into budget season later this, this fall, look at our resident versus non-resident rates, what percentage of our revenue is coming from non-residents and just looking at some of our surrounding, I know that we're a Parks and Rec Department versus a Park and Rec District where you came from. What are the typical differences in costs for residents versus non-residents? Are we in line with that cost difference? Is it 20%? Is it 30%? I just want to make sure that we're not leaving money on the table and that we're making sure that we're providing the best value for our residents, but then also being amenity for people who don't live here in Elgin. So those are my thoughts. Can't wait to see how this goes forward.
Thank you.
Anything else? We need a motion for both the schedule and the rate structure. So Ms. Hermanson can move forward, correct? Otherwise, we're going to be into their season before too long. So the research will have to be done after, kind of a little bit after the fact, I think, to fill in the gaps. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion to approve rate structure and, what was that one?
The rate structure and the.
Oh, the schedule.
And the schedule.
Motion to approve rate, schedule and operation hours.
Second. It's been moved in second. Is there anything else? Mr. Dixon?
Yep, real quick. One thing I want to point out, when going to another community and using something there as a non-resident, sometimes they don't check IDs, right? And so I think some municipalities that don't check IDs, they get into a situation where someone is saying that they're from there and there's really no way to prove it. So I would just want to throw that out there as a suggestion to verify residency so that we're not getting, you know, we're getting everything that we can possibly recoup. So I just want to throw that observation out there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question of clarification. So when we're saying the motion is a rate structure and the timing, what do we mean by rate structure as in a resident and non-resident difference? Or are we saying the rate structure that is written on paper right now?
The rate structure that's proposed.
The $5.
Because they have to come back with another rate structure for us to vote on and that would cause a problem for them to meet their schedule.
Mayor, I want to amend my motion. Sorry to give you a headache. Motion to approve the schedule fee, but with non-resident being $7 and then the operation hours being as proposed.
Second.
Ms. Lewis, did you have that?
No.
Okay. Mr. Good?
Just one thing real quick. So I agree with what's being said about the resident, non-resident, but taking into consideration, this was a condensed timeline to launch this for the season, will that provide hurdles that were unexpected and caused problems for you and or the association to do these things? Because I, like I said, not against it, but I wouldn't also be against, say, it's a first year trial, we're just removing all friction points.
Honestly, I can't speak for the association, but we can make it happen.
Okay. I don't, I'm not going to push against that. I just wanted to ask the question, but.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Stephan?
So just, just to hopefully not make it worse, but make it clear, going to page 25 that Councilman Ortiz mentioned, we're proposing that the daily fees, that first box in that table would match the open lap, swim open laps, $5 resident, $7 non-resident. That's, that's the proposal.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
We're ignoring the residents.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about this stuff at the far right because there's different structure than all of this. So it's basically $5 resident, $7 non-resident. Got it?
All right.
Anthony, are you keeping that the, the season pass is 100 regardless of resident and non-resident? Is a question of clarification?
I think it should be a little bit higher.
If this simplifies it, I can just do a percentage and increase it. I can just do the math and increase it.
Just do the percentage.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Quick, please call a roll before we get in deeper in the weeds.
Councilmembers Alfarrell?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stephan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Thank you, Jen.
Yes, thank you.
Item C is an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the construction and maintenance cost sharing of the Illinois Route 25 Dundee Avenue resurfacing project. IDOT is planning to resurface Illinois Route 25 Dundee Avenue from Page Street to the US Interstate 90 ramp intersection. This project will include pavement milling and resurfacing, concrete median removal and replacement, traffic signal upgrades, and Americans with Disability Act sidewalk improvements. At the city's request, the plans will also be including additions that include emergency vehicle preemption equipment and the removal and replacement of deteriorated sidewalk and roadway sections. This work is expected to begin in August and be completed by the fall.
Move for approval.
Second. Move the second for approval, any discussion? Mr. Ortiz?
I'm glad IDOT's finally doing something. So everybody that catches me outside can stop yelling at me about a street that's not ours, but it's in our city, because there's tons of potholes going towards the 90. So hopefully they fix this, well, they are going to fix it, but hopefully they fix the south end, also going into South Elgin by the train tracks sometime soon also. So appreciate Public Works bringing this up to IDOT and then IDOT getting off their chairs and getting it done.
Anything else? Cork, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Alfarrell?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stephan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item D is change order number one with Upland Design for the Wing Park Master Plan and Inclusive Playground Design. Wing Park, as we know, is one of four regional parks in the city. Staff began working with Upland Design along with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to create a park master plan and inclusive playground design as part of an application for an Illinois Open Space Land Acquisition and Development Grant, commonly referred to as an OSLAD grant. The city in December 2024 was awarded the OSLAD grant in the amount of $600,000 to make these improvements at Wing Park. The grant has a two-year implementation period, beginning in 2025 and ending in March, at the end of March in 2027. A design services agreement was awarded to Upland earlier this year in March, encompassing architectural and engineering design services, additional public outreach, permitting and bid assistance, along with construction management. When this agreement was initially developed, the need for paving improvements that meets ADA standards in the Elgin Classic Little League fields adjacent to Wing Park, as well as the study for the renovation of the existing restroom facility, was not anticipated. This change order enables the consultant to survey additional areas in Wing Park at the Little League complex and that may require paving improvements to require with ADA standards. It also authorizes complete design services, including construction drawings and a cost estimate for this work. The change order will also allow the consultant to develop two concepts, along with cost estimates, for the renovation of the existing park restroom facilities near the proposed inclusive playground renovation sites.
Move for approval.
Second.
Been moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none. Whoops, Mr. Dixon?
I just wanted to reiterate that I'm really happy that this park is getting a facelift. That's all. So I've been hearing about it for years and so I'm happy to see it come to fruition. So I just wanted to reiterate that again. Thank you.
Okay. Cork, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Alfarrell?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stephan?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved 9-0.
Item E is a rezoning request to permit the outdoor display of contractor equipment at 960 through 1010 East Chicago Street. This is a presentation by Attorney Peter Bezos and Equipment Share Representatives. This initiative is being, what, is being requested by Councilmembers Dixon and Stefan.
Mr. Dixon, you brought this to the council. Why did you do that?
I brought it to the council for the, to give Mr. Bezos an opportunity to make his case for city council to provide, and then for us to provide direction to city staff on what we would like to do. When it comes to this item, Mr. Bezos, if you would like to make your presentation, come on up and be prepared.
Mr. Ortiz?
I like the motion to postpone indefinitely.
Second.
It's been moved in second to, lost my train of thought, to put this in discussion in abeyance indefinitely.
To postpone indefinitely.
Postponed indefinitely. Thank you, Mr. Beck. Postponed indefinitely. Any discussion? Mr. Ortiz.
The reason I made the motion, I was thinking about this, is for me, Mr. Bezos had the opportunity and Equipment Share to speak to all council members, and I'm assuming all of them spoke with him. And at that time, he could have got his opinion from us of where this is going. He could have went through the process like every other developer in the city. And by coming to the, straight to the council and skipping city staff, community development, Malat, Demir, and planning and zoning, it's just hyper, it's like skipping the line from everybody else that goes through the actual process. And that's why I think this is inappropriate for it to come straight to the council instead of going through the actual process like everybody else. And then I sent an email to city manager to see if Mr. Malat could be here to give some background and history on the parcel and the property. Is, did he show up or is he here?
Mr. Malat is in the building. He might be in the back, so yes, I honor that request.
Can you give him a text or a phone call to see if he could show up and give us some background on this?
He should be listening. Yes, I'll find him.
Anything else while we're looking for Mr. Malat? Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. This item being open for discussion was never intended to skip the line. This item has to go through the process, just like every other item that has to go through planning and zoning. That was never the intention. That was never the conversation. In my second with Councilman Stefan, that was never the conversation. It was only to give the opportunity to speak publicly about this. And there was never ever going to be a motion to do what it is that they are ultimately requesting. And so I actually had a moment, actually bumped in, I didn't take him out, but bumped in to Mr. Malat right before this meeting, to advise that this is not intended to go around city staff or to loophole planning and zoning of any sort. And so, you know, I think that was, I think that was clear. But Mr. Malat, you will call it up. Go ahead.
Thank you. Councilman, how can I help you, sir?
We, the council received a memo back in April, I believe, with some renderings of what a possible project could look like there, and it was done by the current property owner.
Yes, sir.
And then some other background details within that memo. If you could just publicly say what it is, maybe not everybody knows how to fully or knows how to, knows about this memo that went out, if you could just talk on it.
Sure. I have an image if you want to see that. I can pull that up, but perhaps let me just start with the vision, the overview, and if you'd like to see what those images, how those images look, I'd be happy to even pull those up. In June of 2023, Attorney Bezos reached out to staff to gauge the receptivity to Mr. Lucarcio donating the land to either U46 or some other not-for-profit, or perhaps even other redevelopment opportunities. And in that vein, then, we took the opportunity to suggest that this would be a perfect location for either infill residential or workforce housing. A couple of weeks later, followed up with some contact to Mr. Bezos with Full Circle Communities. You may remember Full Circle Communities redid the Larkin Center at 1212 Larkin, and that award-winning project. We in turn provided Full Circle with the contact information for Mr. Bezos. We traded some emails back and forth. We described some instances where, what the development could take in terms of its form. We suggested a variety of different creative scenarios that could, that could work on that site. We talked about, obviously, multifamily. We talked about mixed use, but we also talked about an opportunity to have a very creative site that included such things as tiny houses, or using shipping containers as, to form houses, or accessory dwelling units. And we provided an email back to Mr. Bezos and Mr. Lucarcio as well, that gave them some articles about different things that other communities were doing, 3D printing. We provided that as an option. And that was in July of 2023. In July 19th, I had a phone conversation with Mr. Lucarcio and his chief investment officer, Mr. Phil Baumann. We talked about what they were considering as they were going forward with the development on this property. And at that point, they suggested that they were going to look at this as not an opportunity necessary to sell the property, but would be, suggested that he wanted to have a continued footprint in Elgin and leave a lasting impression, and this might be an opportunity to do that. That was in July of 2023. We talked more about the quality of housing that this should be, that even if it's workforce and affordable housing, that that need not be run-of-the-mill vanilla box types of housing. He completely agreed. We met then with, I met then with Attorney Bezos in September. We talked about various different funding sources that could be applied to affordable housing and workforce housing, including, I use it, tax credits and the possibility of looking into even energy efficiency grants from various utilities. I communicated with Full Circle in November, and they affirmed what Mr. Lucarcio said, is that they were no longer interested in pursuing anything with Full Circle. And then we had a little bit of a gap, but in April of 2024, Demir and I met with Mr. Bezos about the property. We talked briefly, and that the intent was still to come forward with an apartment project. In May, their architect reached out to us, reached out to the city through 311, got zoning parameters in terms of setbacks, height requirements, et cetera. Later that month, their engineering company reached out to us and got utility information. And then in July of 2024, Demir and I met again with Mr. Bezos and their owner's rep, gentleman named John Eboli, their architect, and two engineers to review their plans. And what they brought forward was 168 dwelling units on about 10.8 acres, 11 acres. We told them that this was a, this was a great concept. We gave them a couple of suggestions on how they could even do more housing, and that was, that was where that project last left.
You said you had a picture to show us?
Yes, if you would give me one moment to...
Is it the one that was in the memo that was sent out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, if you could show us, so whoever's watching can see what we're talking about.
I would be happy to. Give me one second, sir. So that's the property, the houses there. It looks like you've got about nine buildings. And then this was what the architecture looked like. We suggested, for example, that there could be a more urban form there and an opportunity to get even more dwelling units. They were talking about 168. We had given them some suggestions that could easily get them above 200 dwelling units.
That's, I appreciate the background. And going back to the housing part is that in our strategic plan, the word housing is mentioned 24 times. And this council, before me and during me, we all know is a housing problem. And we may not be in writing anywhere, but with renderings like that or draftings like that, that's not back-of-the-napkin stuff. Somebody spent a little bit of money to at least get something that fits the plot of survey and then has front and top elevations, or front elevation and floor layout. So I'm, I'm not in support, I am in support of the business, but not there. And there is another location, if they would have went through this process over on Willard, that could, this, this business could actually go to. And I'm sorry, you would have probably hashed that out with the Equipment Share Company, but they come to the council and not even go through the full process with you, I'm assuming, to know that the Willard property is available, and they could probably move in and open the doors right away.
And I just want to add, when we work with folks, this is never to say that we're going to stand in the way of as-of-right development on a particular property because someone doesn't want to do what we want to do. That's absolutely not the case. We suggested it, and they fully explored it. The difficulty for me comes in now is you consider back in 2023, when we went through that comprehensive amendment to the arterial road corridor overlay district, and all the time and energy that went into it. And so it's not so much that they're departing from what is a, you know, I happen to think a very good idea, it's that they're then saying, well, we don't want to do that, but not only that, we want to, we want to, we want to amend and convolute the arc. Even before, when the arc was amended in 2023, equipment leasing and rental wasn't even a permitted use. We went through that exercise and looked at opportunities for those types of development, but we didn't, but we recognized that there could be some potential concerns with those types of development, especially from the visual perspective. And that's the, one of the underlying premises of the arterial road. You have thousands and thousands of people traveling on our major roads through Elgin, forming an opinion of the economic vitality of Elgin based upon what they're seeing. And some things don't necessarily lend itself to that. But at the same time, we said, there could be considerations at times when it's okay, perhaps on an interior showroom, or in this case, like equipment rental, or boats, or RVs, put them behind the building where they're not highly visible.
That's all I have now. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Malat.
Anything else? Mr. Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the background information.
Excuse me. Point of order. We have a motion to table.
It's not the table.
Chris?
It's a motion to postpone indefinitely, which is different than a motion table. They both have the effect of delaying action on an item. Commonly in assemblies, when they say a motion table, what they're really asking to do is a motion to postpone indefinitely, or should more properly be phrased as a motion to postpone indefinitely. So that's why I said it's what you associate with a motion to table. To lay something on the table usually requires some immediate urgency to consider some other item. So in the past, we've talked about motion table, but if you read Robert's rules, motion to postpone indefinitely has the same effect in that it delays action on an item until sometime in the future, similar to a motion table. It doesn't have the same priority as a motion table. Motion table takes effect. Motion table is not debatable. A motion to postpone indefinitely is debatable. So...
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Good?
So I, like I was saying, when I was initially looking at this, I see two different things that we're talking about here. One is the actual project, and one is this procedure that we're participating in right now. So I applaud the applicant or the group that's entertaining this idea. You have your freedom to reach out to council people, to attempt to present here. I would say that it potentially presents an issue where if we're seeing a project before it goes to planning and zoning, that depending on our reaction and the relationships that people on this board have with planning and zoning and the community, it could potentially influence how those individuals receive this. I understand we're all professionals, and we try to operate by rules and procedures, but it's something that I could see being potentially problematic. And then as for the project itself, this is preferable, as has been kind of highlighted. Everybody across the nation right now is looking for more dwelling units. The corridor that we're trying to transform over, like I look at things in 30-year timelines, so I think this lends itself more to a vision that I've seen and residents in Elgin have told me about as it relates to the East Chicago Street Corridor. But I don't want to keep going further if one of the topics we're discussing right now is to not discuss this before it goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission. So just wanted to share some of my thoughts.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Thorne?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, thank you so much for your insights and your presentation on this. I too feel that this property site is more conducive and beneficial to the city if it were indeed apartments, affordable housing, whatever it becomes. I found one thing very interesting in your background research, a statement that was made by Mr. Lucarcio, that he wanted to leave a lasting impression. He wanted his footprint on Elgin relating to this, to the apartments. What happened to that?
At this, at that point, it was the property, but he hadn't fully, but, yes, sir.
I'm just curious. It seemed like that went away.
Okay.
That's all.
Any further questions for Mr. Malat? Okay, Mr. Stefan?
No, I don't have a question. Thank you, Mark, for your, for your presentation. I, I felt obligated to speak as the second on this. I, I wanted to have this discussion, apparently we're having it anyway, as we debate the motion to table indefinitely. As the business and his attorney made clear to me as I met with them and Rose, that they want to get direction early in case, if there's not council appetite for changing the arc to accommodate exterior storage of rental equipment in the front of buildings, which is essentially the issue, then they wouldn't pursue it any further. And I've told everybody, including Cory, who reached out to me to be the second, that I have not been convinced that we need to make this exception to the arc overlay to allow this to happen. So I've always been against it, and I still am. I'm listening to everybody else's arguments and, and positions on what we should do here. And I think for the benefit of the business that's proposing to come to the site and their attorney, they're getting a sense of where the council stands, but, which is, I think, what the intent was, is to do this anyway. But I think I've heard other people say it. The housing is definitely a fantastic bonus, and I've, as chair of the committee or the commission that runs the housing authority, we definitely have a development team that could do exactly this. But that's, the issue here is, you know, are we, are we going to entertain an exception to the arc, as has been requested, for this property? And I'm not for that, and I hear other people, several other people express that they're not for that. So I'm hoping that maybe it gives the applicant and their attorney what they were looking for, which was the whole intent on having this on the, on the agenda. So that's my comments.
Anything else? Okay. Ms. Alfarro?
Similar to, to John, I lean towards no in rezoning. However, I think in procedural, if they're not sure from the entire council if we would or wouldn't rezone, I do understand coming directly to the council to get a better idea. And because of the open meetings act, you can't have an open discussion with all of us and hear multiple different perspectives. They're only allowed to hear two different perspectives at one time and in different meetings. And so I do understand the request to try to have a conversation with the entire council to get a feel and have a discussion, to hear other perspectives, because other perspectives might give you an opportunity to learn something new, to change your mind. And so I do understand the business coming forward to talk to the entire council at once.
Okay. I guess my final comments here. I've been doing this for 25 years. I've looked at petitions and proposals for 25 years. This is the most incomplete and disrespectful petition I've ever seen brought to this council. One page with one paragraph. When you talk about inclusion, Mr. Bezos called me and said, we'd like to meet with you, Mr. Mayor. I said, okay, fine. I called him back, left a message for him. I'm available all next week. Never called me back. I never met with him. He met with other council people, so he did not want to meet with all, with the entire council. He did not want to meet with the mayor. This process was disrespectful. It was disrespectful to that man and the staff, and Mr. Bezos, you knew better than that. You tried to shoehorn this thing through and do something that you shouldn't have tried. And I think that, I think you're seeing what the result can be here. You follow a process. This process has been effective for us for a quarter of a century, and effective, and brought us good, solid development through discussion and everybody getting a chance to speak their mind, and you tried to go around that. I think that, I think, I think that, I think, I think that's, you can please come up and make a comment. Yes, you do.
So council members, first of all, Mr. Mayor, I've told several people on this council and others that the only... council and others that the only two council members that never called me back were you and Mr. Good. If you left me a message, I never got it because I, I was wondering why I never heard from you. So I didn't intentionally not call you back. In fact, I wanted to meet with you and you, Mr. Good. This notion that we're going around something is completely wrong. I've talked to, to Mark Malat and your description, Mark, of what happened was right. The, the owner looked at this. He contacted people that you, that you put him onto. And he told me just recently, you know, I, I just, please tell them I'm not going to do housing. It doesn't pencil out. It's zoned CI. I'm going to do something business-wise. So, you know, you may prefer that, but that, he's not going to do apartments. But, but when I talked to staff and especially the city manager, he was very clear. He said the council has set up a policy that they would like more housing. And my response was, well, but I wonder if they might see on this traditionally commercial street, an opportunity to bring something with a first-class company and significant revenue generation. I wonder if they might adhere to the business nature of that corridor or not. And that's what we came to do, is have you give us a policy statement. When I met with seven of you, we purposely didn't say, well, how were you going to vote? That's not appropriate, right? We, we said we were going to try and come before you as a group. And Mark Wallace from Equipment Chair flew here from Missouri to give you his upgraded presentation with site plans and lots of things that we heard from you. This is not going around the policy. This is not a, many council, in fact, start, many petitions in other communities, start with council on major projects so that they know what the policy is. To go through your process is a three to five-month process, lots of money, lots of legal fees, lots of design fees. So, you know, that's not your process. We don't normally start here with you. But when it's a matter of policy, you set the policy. So if you're going to set the policy that Chicago Street is going to turn residential, we just need to know that. And so I really, I'm kind of offended by your comment, too. I have never played fast and loose with this council, and I didn't do it this time.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. We have a, we have a motion to postpone discussion on this proposal indefinitely. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Alfaro? Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Just, this is the motion to postpone?
Yes.
To postpone.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stefan?
No.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes. The motion's approved 7-0. 7-2, I'm sorry. Okay. Announcements from the council. Cory voted yes?
7-2.
Sorry, I didn't hear, I didn't understand.
Cory voted yes.
7-1, okay. Gotcha. 7-1.
Oh, that's right. Rose isn't here. 7-1.
Yep. Announcements from the council. Mr. Ortiz?
Well, I didn't draft this. I'm not taking credit for it, but something that people should know if they haven't or if they're not on the internet. So this came from our communications director, I think this is his job title, Mr. Jeff Knox, to the council on May 21st. I'm pleased to share that Elgin has been named one of the best places to live in the United States by U.S. and World Report, ranking number five among cities in Illinois, earning number 122 spot nationally in the publications from 2025 to 2026, the list of 250 best places to live in the U.S. And then he goes on about other things, but this is, goes to show that our staff downstairs and on the other side of the building and public works, our police department, firefighters, everybody's doing an awesome job of keeping our city in rankings like this. Of course, we're going to have naysayers on the internet saying that we have a bad image, we're doing this wrong, we're doing that wrong. We can't make everybody happy. But if we're getting national, just like the third or fourth ones I've been on the council, that our city, our staff and our community is doing great things, then that means we're going in the right direction, even though we do have naysayers saying that we're not. So thank you to everybody. Thank you, Mr. Cozo and your staff, and then my colleagues in the dais for keeping Elgin going.
Mr. Thorne?
Thank you, Mayor. As everyone knows, this past Monday was Memorial Day. And once again, I'd like to compliment the Elgin Patriotic Memorial Association in conjunction with the City of Elgin for putting on the four programs that were indeed outstanding. And a special thanks to the mayor for his words, his speeches at both Veterans Memorial Park and Bluff City Cemetery. The Bluff City program this year was actually filmed by Channel 9 Television and was put on Channel 9. So Elgin is making its mark as the city in the suburbs. My compliments to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thorne. Anything else? Ms. Powell?
I just want to say congratulations to all of the recent high school graduates. School District U-46 and surrounding districts held high school graduations this past weekend and over the past couple of weekends. Thousands of students are making that transition to the next level, whether it be to the workforce or college, or whatever it is that they're, they're pursuing, moving into the workforce or training. And a whole lot of happy parents. So just congratulations to all the graduates out there and wishing them the best in their future endeavors.
Mr. Stefan?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in with an event that I think helps us, I like to think helps us with these recognitions that the city gets. I've been for over eight years part of a group, a committee that puts on a bike race. We're one stage of 10 stages in a 10-day bike race here in Elgin. Elgin's date is going to be Friday, July 25th. All day up at the Old Sherman Hospital site is the start-finish. We are looking for volunteers as a way to volunteer, but I am host, I am chairing this year the Host Housing Committee for this event. And what we are looking for is Spanish-speaking host housing, particularly. We get over 700 riders. We get riders from, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, over 15 different countries. We get a lot of teams from Central, South, Central America, South America, Mexico, and the Caribbean, where the riders are primarily Spanish-speaking. And the idea is to create a atmosphere for them here where they want to stay here for the whole 10 days. If you are interested in hosting a team for one day or the whole 10 days, then you can get ahold of us. The website for Chicago CRIT, which is the umbrella organization out of Chicago that runs this, is too large for me to read, but I have information if anybody wants it. Again, the dates are July 18th through 27th, and Elgin's date is Friday, July 25th. We will have racing all day up in the neighborhood around the Old Sherman Hospital. So thank you.
And what, what time would that, you expect that to start?
It starts, it starts, if it's, the schedule's still to be determined, but if it's the same as last year, it'll kick off at 11 o'clock. And the last race takes off with the pro men's at about 6 o'clock and ends about 8:30. So it ends about 8:30 at night.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for the, anything else from the council? Mr. Manager, anything from staff?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn to the regular council meeting. So moved.
Second.
Moved in a second to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Alfaro?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene at the regular council meeting at 7:30.
President.
Dixon.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Martinez. Ortiz.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Stefan.
Here.
Thorne.
Here.
Mayor Captain.
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of May 14, 2025.
Move for approval.
Second.
Been moved in second for approval and corrections.
The two led the bid number 25-007 and bid -008 or 25-008. That motion had contingent on I E P A funding and that wasn't included in the minutes. So if the minutes can reflect that, that was approved contingent on the approval of I E P A funding.
Communications, we have a call this evening.
Oh, so I make a motion to approve the minutes with the noted corrections.
Yes, second.
Yes. Moved in second to approve the minutes with the noted corrections. Please call the rule.
Councilmember Zoffaro?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved seven, eight, zero. We have communications this evening too, and we have, these are not proclamations. I received, I received a notice in a part of a group for mayors against gun violence. And I was one of the first mayors to sign that almost 10, over 10 years ago. That it's kind of a no brainer. Mayors are never in, should never be in favor of gun violence. And we wear orange on this day for that purpose. And I think it's important for us to be aware of that and for mayors to be aware of that. And we should strive for that. I'm sorry, we should.
Thank you. We, the mayors, the mayors of the United States have signed an agreement against gun violence. I signed it over 10 years ago. And on this day and this week, we wear orange to celebrate June 6th as a gun, no gun violence day. And it's important for all mayors and all communities. And it's started to resonate around the country. You can see it in the drop of crime rates and the drop of murder rates are taking some, having some effect. And I think that's important. Sometimes that's how little things start. And we bring it back to the community and make all citizens aware that we are not in favor of gun violence. We don't, we don't like handguns in the, in the possession of young people. And that's what we strive to do. So congratulations to every citizen and every city in this country for doing this progress and making this progress. It brings us to a communication from the U.S. Department of the Interior for recognition for outstanding contributions in historic preservation. Mr. Malat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this is, so this is normally the site that these take place on, so it's a little different perspective. I appreciate it. Have Liz Marston join me and Ms. Sunquist, if you would please come forward. Again, thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers, City Manager. As we wrap up Historic Preservation Month, we want to take a moment and elaborate a little bit on the most recent federal recognition bestowed upon Ms. Kristin Sunquist. And more so to share with you or remind you of some of her more significant accomplishments during her 10 years here in Elgin as our preservation planner. As the author of her federal nomination, I'm happy to turn over the podium to Liz Marston of the Elgin History Museum.
Hi, everyone. Okay, the Secretary of the Interior's Historic Preservation Awards are really prestigious. They are presented annually by the U.S. Department of the Interior to recognize outstanding contributions to historic preservation by federal, state, tribal, and local governments. Only one award nationally to each of those categories of government. The awards are presented to individuals whose work has significantly advanced the goals of the National Preservation, Historic Preservation Act. They look for excellence in preservation contributions and whether their work serves as a model for others. Kristin was selected under the local government category, a big honor for her and a big honor for Elgin.
Kristin's responsibilities include overseeing over 1,700 properties within Elgin's five locally historic, locally designated historic districts and 22 landmarks, and is the staff liaison to the Elgin Heritage Commission and various subcommittees, including the Design Review Subcommittee and Grant Review Subcommittee. Her responsibilities include facilitating the review and approval of more than 400 certificate of appropriateness applications every year, Elgin's 50/50 and 75/25 Historic Reinvestigation Grant Programs, overseeing the Heritage Plaque Program, the Annual Mayor's Awards for Historic Preservation Event, Preservation Month Events, and now implementing the Historic Exterior Paint Program in the Elgin National Watch Historic District.
Chairman of the Design Review Subcommittee, Scott Savell, stated, "I have had the honor of working with all of Elgin's preservation planners since the early 1990s when the position was first created. The quality of the personnel has always been excellent, but Kristin takes it to a whole new level. She is by far the best of the best. She has brought a renewed vigor to the preservation movement in Elgin and has energized both the community and the Elgin Heritage Commission to increase efforts to protect our heritage." Kristin has many accomplishments, but two stand out in our nomination. The 2022 redesign of the Elgin's Historic District and Landmark Design Guidelines. It was unanimously accepted by the council. And it's, it's really a pretty cool document. I know you're all aware of it. But Kristin provided a cover-to-cover redesign with more illustrations and photographs to make it user-friendly and easy to understand. She even created the illustrations and took the photos. Clickable links to helpful articles and sections within the guidelines to provide an efficient and helpful document for property owners and contractors. By keeping the project in-house, Kristin saved money and is able to edit the document if there are changes, such as adding a new landmark or providing a new link to specific articles. Kristin also applied for and received a C L G grant to cover the cost of translating the guidelines into Spanish, a priority for her. And the Design Guidelines received the 2024 Award for Best Practices in Protection from the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions. So that's one thing. The other thing, that's just one thing. There's more. Award-winning historic elgin.com website with information on over 500 properties. Kristin encouraged the Elgin Heritage Commission to digitize the building plaque nominations through the creation of the Historic Elgin Website. Kristin coordinated the extensive collaboration and teamwork between the Heritage Commission, a historic preservation intern, and a web developer. The website, which Kristin continually updates, also allows Elgin residents and visitors to learn more about Elgin's historic treasures. The website won state and national awards and was a model for Boone County.
Thank you, Liz. And on top of all of that, Kristin, Liz, Bill Briskin, several others recently submitted an impressive 97-page application for Elgin to be designated a World War II Heritage City. The National Park Service picks one city per state that recognizes the contributions of a local community to the home front during the efforts in World War II. And we hope to hear favorably around August or September, so keep your fingers crossed. The application is available on the city's website if you would like to learn more. We've also started applying Ms. Sunquist's design talents outside of the historic districts in downtown, building on her undergraduate degree in architectural studies from UW Milwaukee, her master's degree in historic preservation from the School of Art Institute of Chicago, and her 2021 certification from the American Institute of Certified Planners. Ms. Sunquist regularly models new buildings and develops before-and-after renderings of building renovations to show citizens, property owners, and developers the potential in their projects. So Kristin, we wanted you to have your award letter to put on your wall in recognition of your accomplishment. But we also wanted to take this opportunity to remind everyone what you bring to your job each and every day and let you know how very, very much we appreciate you.
I did write out something, and I will be as brief as I can. And this is just a wonderful way for me to end, for me personally, to end Preservation Month. I am deeply honored to receive the 2023 Secretary of Interior's Historic Preservation Award in the Certified Local Government category. This recognition means a lot to me, knowing that the former Secretary Deb Holland approved this recognition, which is incredibly humbling. I'd also like to thank Liz Marston, Director of the Elgin History Museum, for nominating me and my family, my husband Matt and our children Hudson and now, for their patience and support through countless historic house tours, lectures, and preservation events. A heartfelt thank you also to my boss, Mark Malat, and for his unwavering support and guidance over the years. This award comes at a time when formal recognition from the Department of the Interior is uncertain. So thank you for this local recognition. I'd also like to thank Carolyn Henry, the former Federal Historic Preservation Officer, for coordinating the review of this award. Prior to working with the city of Elgin, my husband and I both lived in Chicago. When we began house hunting, we wanted something affordable, but more importantly, historic. That search led us to Elgin and we immediately fell in love with its character and neighborhoods. We moved into the Elgin Historic District, began volunteering, and eventually I was appointed to the Design Review Subcommittee. Just nine months later, the preservation planner role opened up, and thanks to Mark, I was fortunate to be offered this position. 10 years later, I'm proud to be serving the city of Elgin and its residents, helping to preserve the history that drew us here. Yes, there are hard days in public service, but more often than not, it's incredibly rewarding to give back to the community. In today's complex political climate, I'm especially grateful to work in a city that truly values its history. Thank you again for celebrating this moment with me.
That brings us to the portion where we allow public comments. We have only one person to sign up this evening, and it's Billy Freus.
First time, I'm a little nervous, but.
You got three minutes to be nervous, you're in good shape.
Three minutes? All right, I'll try to make this as fast as possible. I'm a concerned citizen. I have two children and one on the way. I don't know how many people were on a Monday celebrating outside outdoors. I know I was, I left my house 8:30 in the morning to go play pickleball. When I first left, I counted eight, nine airplanes spraying stuff into the air. It's not natural what's going on here. I counted over 16 by the time I was done playing pickleball. It was a nice, clear day. Do you guys remember that early in the morning? By 1 o'clock, white clouds everywhere. I mean, it was a blanket. This is not, this is not normal, this is not natural. These aren't even from, these aren't even pictures from Monday. I have pictures on Monday from my phone that are just making letter A's. I mean, the entire sky was clouded. This is not natural, this is not what God intended, this is man-made, and something needs to be done to stop this. This is aluminum bromium, this is chemicals that they're spraying to the air. The old saying that what goes up? Can somebody finish that? What goes up?
Comes down.
Must come down. So where do you think all those chemicals go? All the aluminum? If I shaved, if I took a piece of aluminum siding off a house, shaved it down to fine, fine powder, poured it in the glass, would you serve it to your grandchildren, your children? No? Would you guys, would you guys drink it? That's what we're doing every single day. I mean, this is just ridiculous what's going on here. I don't know if you guys are the right channel, right proper channeling to do something about this. I hope that you guys are, but this has got to change. What can we do about this? I'll yield for a minute. Anybody got suggestions? You guys are my constituents, right? I pay taxes. I own about four properties in King County, spend about $80,000 a year, year after year. What can we do? Anybody got an idea? You guys got kids? Yeah?
Be clear on, these are commercial airplanes that you're complaining about?
You know what, man? You tell me, I have no idea. I would like you guys to find out who is doing this. And there's a second thing I do want to bring up as well, too. Aside from this, I think that I pay so much in taxes, again, I own four properties here in Elgin. I'd like to have another three minutes as possible after you guys answer what we can do about this or what we can go about doing about this. Because this is not natural, this is criminal, this is illegal, it's being banned in so many states. Why is it not banned here in Illinois? Tennessee banned it, Florida banned it. This is chemicals, you guys can Google this stuff. Aluminum, all these things do not belong in the air. This is not what God created. We don't need a blanket of white cloud, we need the sun. We don't need aluminum in our drinking water. We don't need chemicals in our drinking water, there's already enough, there's already enough crap in our water. You know, we don't need to put more in. It's poisoning us. So what on God's green earth can we do about this?
Are you deduct, do you see that this is aluminum?
I'm sorry? This is, you can Google this stuff, this is chemtrails. This is what, what they're putting into our air. This is not, this is nothing hidden, that government's admitted to this. States have banned this, the state of Tennessee has banned this, the state of Florida has banned this. So I want the state of Illinois to ban this as well, too. I got three kids, I got two and one on the way, I'm not going to let this happen. Again, again, if I put this stuff in your drinking water, you guys aren't going to drink it, you're sure as hell not going to give it to your grandkids, not going to give it to your children. It's not going to go to my children anymore either. I'm tired of seeing this every single day, it's day to day. Don't tell me you guys don't see this stuff. If you guys were out Memorial Day on Monday, you guys know what I'm talking about. It was blue skies, and then 1 o'clock, white skies. You guys know? Does anybody agree with me about this? You guys see it? If you guys were outdoors? You guys could say, yeah, it's cool?
I was out of town, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Freus. It's a little bit above our pay grade to do that. And I think it's, you commented about the state of Illinois, that's the state. And the city of Chicago controls, I can't answer your, your questions about all airports. City of Chicago obviously runs O'Hare Airport. And that's what, we have flight paths go over Elgin all the time. So, but that's a little bit above the people up here's pay grade to be able to, to do that. And I think you're contacting the wrong people, so I think you need to.
You're the mayor of my city, I'd like you to help me stop this. I mean, you care about your citizens?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to help you send you in the right direction.
Who I can talk to, what, tell me that I can go to.
I think you need to call O'Hare Airport and ask them about it. And I think that maybe one of our state representatives would be a person to go to. Either, it depends on where you live, your representative.
I live in King County.
There's a website where you could just unplug in your address and they'll tell you all your elected officials. So they'll tell you who is your state rep, who is your state senator, et cetera. So depending on the boundaries that we are in Elgin, we have two different state senators, we have multiple state reps, and they could give you that information. And you've.
Please, if you could.
If the meeting goes quick, I could give it to you.
I'm sorry?
If the meeting goes quick, I could give it to you. The website, so you could figure out exactly who are your elected officials in that part.
And that's the start.
Yeah.
That's where it would start.
If you guys could pitch in too, that'd be huge too. You guys are already sitting up on the high seats, man, you know?
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
You've used your three minutes already. Same subject? Same subject?
Sorry, no, different subject.
Well, you used your three minutes. We tried to hold it to that. Yeah, I understand, it depends on where we go here. Generally, we don't do that. Can you make it really quick?
I'll make it super quick, man.
All right.
I just want to ask a question about what portion of my taxes go to the police department, would you guys say? And I'm not going to hold you guys to what you say about, say I pay $80,000 a year between all my properties, would you say about 20% goes to the police department? Does that sound about right? And what I sound, I'm just asking, generally. Well, okay, well, that's fine. So, you know, you guys post these police officers up on Lake Street, you know, and you pull people over, they're just trying to get to work or trying to do their job. I think police time could be used for so much more better in the state. Again, I have children, you know, you guys wanted to talk numbers, you brought up numbers, sir. There's over 62,992, 859 images, videos of child pornography, of rape, of all these things going on, sexual trafficking, sexual abuse going on in America. I can't imagine how much is going on here in Illinois. I think the money that I'm paying the police department shouldn't be for these guys to sit on the side of the road to pull people, hardworking people over. That time should be used to investigate these pedophiles, should be used from some kind of cyber police. Our tax dollars for these police officers should be used for actually stopping crimes, not stopping people going to work. I don't know about you, again, I got kids. I would kill somebody if anybody did something to my child. If you guys have children or grandchildren, I'm sure you feel the same way. I think that those daughters and these police officers should be doing something better with their time. That's what I think, I think it's just common sense. What do you guys think?
Thank you for your comment.
She has a human exploitation unit.
If you guys can write this stuff down for me, it'd be great. I mean, I'll go to wherever I need to go, man. I mean, I'll, I'll put a badge on it and start my own little force, man. All these numbers, all these things going on in this world, man, it's going to, you know what? And I can't stand for it with children, man, you know? Sorry, I want to live in a clean world, I want a safe world, I want my tax dollars to actually do something for me.
Okay. Okay, thank you for your time and your comments. On this bid number 25-006, Year Four Lead Service Line Replacement Contract A.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we award this bid to Joel Kennedy Construction Corporation of Waukegan, Illinois, in the amount of $8,801, conditioned on the receipt of the IEP A funding that's been applied for.
Second. Been moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call a roll.
Councilmember Zalferro?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thoron?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, 8-0. Bid number two is bid number 25-031, Repair and Resurfacing Various Basketball and Tennis Courts.
Move to award the bid to MTJ Sports of Kiwanee. Don't correct me on that, because I'm by sponsoring around Illinois, for the repair and resurfacing of basketball and tennis courts at Jack Cook Park and the tennis courts at Meyer Park in amount of $104,600.
Second. It's been moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call a roll.
Councilmember Zalferro?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thoron?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, 8-0. Item three is bid number 25-032, Shadow Hill Basketball Courts.
Yes, Mayor, I make the motion to award a contract to Chicagoland Paving Contractors in the amount of $49,000.
Second. It's been moved to second for approval, any discussion? Mr. Dixon?
I have a question for clarification of the... Yes, thank you, I'm sorry. All right. With any of the major construction that's happening on the basketball court, is there, I didn't see it, but I just wanted to ask, is there going to be any reconfiguration of the course themselves as far as how many hoops, you know, changing from full court to half court or anything like that? No?
It is just redoing how?
Just the surfacing?
Yep.
Okay, all right. I saw the, the major, you know, major construction one, I was like, oh, let me just ask. So thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Court, please call a roll.
Councilmember Zalferro?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thoron?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, 8-0. Item four is bid number 25-033, Settlers Park Asphalt Tennis Courts.
Mayor, I'll move that we award this to Chicagoland Paving Contractors of Lake Zurich for the demolition and reconstruction of the tennis courts at Settlers Park in the amount of $75,000.
Second.
Moved to second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call a roll.
Councilmember Zalferro?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thoron?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, 8-0. Item five is Wing Park Family Aquatic Center, 3-meter-high dive stairs and safety improvements in job order contract.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend we award this contract to FH Passion for the replacement of the 3-meter high dive ladder with stairs and safer diving tower structure in the amount of $173,895.
Second. Been moved to second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call a roll.
Councilmember Zalferro?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thoron?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, 8-0. Item six is a Wing Park Family Aquatic Center Longevity and Safety Renovations, another job order contract.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend we award this contract again to FH Passion for the comprehensive renovation project at Wing Park Family Aquatic Center in the amount of $644,654.
Second. Been moved to second for approval, any discussion? Mr. Thoron?
I'd just like to touch on the fact that I think it's great that we continue to support my favorite park. Wing Park has had the pool, I think, actually, first pool went in about 1915, and it's been redone a couple of years, a couple different times, and the bathhouses were there. And now we've got the aquatic center. But for those that don't know, before it was actually called Wing Park, the area was dubbed Sulfur Spring because there was a sulfur spring there. Property was owned by the Wing family. They made a form, circular form of concrete around where the sulfur spring was and allowed people to come there with sick children and dip them into the water. And there's old pictures and postcards from this dating back to the late 1800s and then into the early 1900s. Finally, it was closed up. It actually was located just north of the aquatic center, right by the creek, by that little walking bridge. It's recently been discovered and unearthed and excavated and cleared. And the Parks Department has now coordinated and got a grate over it for safety, and it is, to me, very unique Elgin history. So I welcome anybody to go take a look at this site. I've got some original postcards from it, but Mr. Whalen from the Parks Department, I know, is that his name correct?
Correct, yes.
He has done some added research on it and found some unbelievable pictures. So it's just across the little parking area, right adjacent to the creek at Wing Park, right by the aquatic center. I encourage you all to take a look at a part of Elgin's history that was lost for almost 100 years and has now come back.
Anything else? Court, please call a roll.
Councilmember Zalferro?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thoron?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, 8-0. Brings us to other business. The first item is a resolution authorizing execution of a purchase, a purchase agreement with Duff Entertainment Incorporated for operational services in connection with Nightmare on Chicago Street event. Move for approval? Second. Moved to second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call a roll.
Councilmember Zalferro?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thoron?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, 8-0. Item two is an ordinance granting a conditional use for an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization in the AB Area Business District and Arc, the Arterial Road Corridor Overlay District at 205 South Randall Road.
Move for approval?
Second. Moved to second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court please call a roll.
Councilmember Zalferro?
Abstain.
Dixon?
Yes.